Alright, good evening everyone. Today is October 16th and it's about 6:05. And we are the Gotten Board of Education and this is the committee of the whole meeting. Our first order of business is the reviewing of the October 10th meeting minutes. And if I could have a motion for acceptance. Don't move. Can I have a second?
Oh, second.
I've got Rita. So I have a first, Ms. Joan by Liz, and a second by Rita. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. I got it. I lost my train of thought for one second. But the train found me. Alright, so our second is, and so, um, just putting in a lay of the land. I am really excited that our friends from the Gotten Middle School are here. Um, and welcome, welcome, welcome. So we are, um, for the Gotten Middle School staff. We are, the board is just trying to really understand data and what it means. And also what are the plans of what, what she founded, which, what are we gonna do?
So what now?
So what now? And so what, what we got last week was on the review of the data from, um, the high school. Um, and specifically when we saw, when we saw the data and we saw areas of concern or growth, like what are we doing to help support and continue the growth? And also what are some of the things that are implemented for, for kiddos? And I, I really found that the conversation last week was inspirational. Um, and I expect nothing but inspiration. And Mr. Bass, it's so good to see your face.
I think that we could start maybe so we introduce staff, especially.
He took the words, he took the words right out.
And also the way we broke it out for Fitch, it's broken out kind of naturally in parts. So looking at some of the disaggregated data, the ELA, then the math, SPAC, then the NGSS, and then almost in four-part harmony, so that the final will be the action plan. And so that we give the board a chance to then ask questions after each section. You know, so that, um, and we kind of marched through it that way. So.
We'll start with.
I'm Peter Bass, Principal of Gotten Middle School. In my right, Keith Daniel. You want to name this? This is the principal.
We're glad to have her too.
Thank you for having us this evening. Uh, Susan, you mentioned after each segment. Um, so are you just going to be getting to all the data and then the steps to the active plan? Or you want to go?
I would say that maybe if you just, um, after you get through the ELA, there might be some questions. We'll just check for comprehension and for questions, that kind of thing. Okay. And so the other board members that are on are Andrea. And then it looks like we also have Dr. Um, William Hogan. Um, and I know that Jay is at work and he will be zooming in when he is able to. We actually didn't introduce the board. So how about if we do that quickly? So Andrea, do you want to introduce yourself? Andrea?
I, I, I hear you. I'm Andrea Ackerman. I've been, um, in, involved in the schools in Gotten for fifty-seven years. And I was a teacher and a principal and now I'm on the board. Is that what you wanted?
That'd be perfect. Thank you ma'am. It's good to hear your voice and I hope that you continue to get better.
Thank you.
Um, and William, are you on?
I am. And I am on the board. I'm William Hogan. Been on the board for a year. And I'm sorry, I'm remote because I'm driving back from the Capitol. Um, and that's me, William.
Natural.
Simple fact, right? He wishes he was on the board because I like to tease him a lot more. Um, but I'm also, I'm Kim Shepherdson Watson and I'm the chairperson. Alright, you're on.
Okay. Again, thanks for having us this evening. Want to accomplish a few things as tonight with very communicating what's going on with our assessment data. First, I'd like to share about who we are as a school population or student population. And then go into, uh, the results of the summer best back data from last year. As well as the NDIS, some of the data. So the SPAC, ELA, and math as Ms. Oxen referred to earlier. So there we go. Alright, so our student population last year, and as we look at this information, it's important to remember that this is May. End of May of last year. Our student population in grade six was three hundred twelve students, grade seven, two hundred eighty-seven, grade eight was three hundred nine. Our special education population for these students, we were at nineteen point three percent special ed. And our English learners, sometimes referred to as multilingual learners or English language learners. We were at, thank you, Mark.
That was me. I was the one that's being so. Imagine that.
Our military population, our students who come from military families are eighteen point five percent. And then our racial makeup is to the right.
And this is how the state classifies racial makeup. So that's how we report it. How it gets reported back to us.
Alright, so, uh, see the green portion there, forty-seven percent white enrollment. Hispanic, Latino is at twenty-six point two percent. Multi-race at twelve point nine percent. Black African-American, seven point three percent. Asian, five point three. American Indian, Alaska Native, point seven percent. And maybe Hawaiian, Pacific Islanders, point six. Our lunch stats. So the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch was fifty-one point three percent last year. You're going to see these colors and these levels as we go through the next slides for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And when you see the red, that's level one, we think they did not meet the standard, the grade level standard for, for that area. Level two is approaching, they're getting closer, getting near to meeting the standard. Level three is they met the standard for the grade level. Level four is they exceeded the standard. And you'll notice that throughout the presentation, we refer to something as benchmark. Or at or above benchmarks. If they had level three or level four, they'd have met that criteria. So here are English Language Arts results, some of the results from last May. The top section, you'll see that just orient you to the slide. The performance distribution presents, the percentages of students are on the left-hand side of this chart. And the actual count, the number of students are on the right-hand side. So you can see in that first, uh, section, that first row, it says student count, the total number of students that, that we have were eight hundred eighty-four. And those were the students that were tested last year. And in, uh, the entire school, the numbers, the percentage of students that did not meet the standard was twenty-nine percent. Those who were near, uh, approaching, being standard were twenty-six percent. Those who met the standard were thirty percent. Those who exceeded were fourteen percent. So at or above were forty-four percent. But we did have twenty-six percent who showed, uh, what we believe is great potential. That were near meeting that standard. And then next we go to the breakdown by grade level. We go down to that next row below. Uh, again, the orientation is, is the same in regard to percentages on the left and the actual student counts on the right. So for sixth grade, and this was a heavily impacted grade, so it's a group that we're really focusing on working with. Thirty-five percent at the end of May last year did not meet the standard English Language Arts. We did have twenty-eight percent who were near meeting that standard. Twenty-five percent met and twelve percent exceed that standard. So at or above, we're at thirty-seven percent. But again, we had twenty-eight percent of our students who were very near to meet the next standard. Seventh grade. Twenty-eight percent of students did not meet the standard. Twenty-five percent were approaching that standard and near it. Thirty-two met it, thirty-two percent met it and sixteen percent exceeded it. So at or above, we're at forty percent. We have twenty-five percent are getting close. Eighth grade, twenty-six percent in English Language Arts did not meet the standard. Twenty-four percent approaching, thirty-four percent met, sixteen percent exceeded. And so that exceeded about fifty percent, twenty-four percent getting close. Just to, I, I think you probably saw this last week with Fitch, but just to refresh what high needs means. And this is a term that comes from the state of Connecticut, high needs. And it just means that the students who are in the high needs group belongs to one or more of the following subgroups. That would be special education, multi-language learners or English language learners. Economically disadvantaged meaning that they qualify for free or reduced lunch. As you look at how the students who are high needs did on, uh, the SPAC ELA, as opposed to those are non-high needs. You'll see that those students who were high needs, we had five hundred eleven who took the test in the LA. And nine high needs, three hundred seventy-three students took the test in English Language Arts. And the blue bars represent those students who were the high need. So we can see that forty-two percent of the high need students did not meet the standard. Twenty-eight percent were approaching. Twenty-four percent met, twenty-six percent exceeded. For those non-high needs, twelve percent did not meet, twenty-three percent were approaching, thirty-nine percent met, and twenty-six percent exceeded. So we can see that both with the high needs and the non-high needs, that approaching group is significant. And also we see that the high needs that did not meet is extremely significant. And that is, uh, population that we know that we have to really drill down and support individually constructed for the, again, it's not the interactive.
Wait, Claire. This is all from all fourth grade, I mean, third grade?
All three grades. To drill down further, when we revert to our high need students who will become, uh, yeah, becoming a real focus for us, uh, to give you a better sense of how they did on this. Some of the assessment, those who are English learners, eighty-eight percent. We had twenty-eight, eighty-eight percent did not meet the standard, fourteen percent are approaching. And then ignore that, because that was little times. Uh, next row, special education, we had sixty-four percent of our, of our hundred fifty-two students did not meet the standard English Language Arts. Twenty-four percent of thirty-six students were approaching, getting near. We had eleven percent meet the standard, we had one percent students exceeded special education. Now for our, our free reduced lunch. There's three hundred and thirty-eight students, twenty-nine percent of the students did not meet standard, thirty-one percent were approaching, they were near the standard. Thirty-one percent met the standard and we have nine percent thirty students exceeded. In comparison to other middle schools in our, in our dirt, as we know, the dirt is our towns, districts, which have similar socioeconomic and demographic makeups to Gotten. Uh, you can see that Gotten is represented in red, GMS. Uh, the state is represented in red. And so we can see that we're a few points behind the state. Middle schools that are dirt. Forty-eight percent, actually, I take that back, the state number is the state number overall. So that, uh, the total number of folks are, they encapsulates the entire, uh, all the districts of the state. So we're a few points behind the state. Um, and we were fifth in our dirt with regard to English Language Arts. We don't want to be there.
Right. We're usually neck and neck with Vernon. As a matter of fact, we're going to be doing some visits. They're going to come to us and we're going to go to them. So to really learn from each other, but I think you've said before, Lauren, that the districts makeup that are more like us are hand in, in Middletown, the same incredible size and some of this disaggregated data, very similar to those districts. Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good question. And thanks for this.
Right. And Killingley too. Killingley has shown some really great insight with, um, science. So we are going to be meeting with colleagues that have done some good work.
One thing that jumped out, we had something to do with us per se, but Manchester numbers were interesting. Six percent in the LA. So that was your, like, we'll be on demand.
So is there any other questions though around ELA? Yeah. So is there any, is there any, anything that the board would like? Let me, um, make sure that I can see the.
Things that's mostly going to be like, what are you doing? So I, I think you have your work cut out.
Please.
Okay, on the sixth grade last year, or seventh grade. Refresh our memory. What grades were they in during?
So sixth grade last year, twenty-two, twenty-three. They were very great, yes.
During the fourth?
Yeah.
Early and started.
Alright, so real big change here. Very academic and over big change here. And so it's obvious that that pandemic is really negative. And so I would also be interested to know, and, and I'm not asking you this, but what their attendance during a pandemic was like, how that negatively affected. And you know, that's something that I thought the mind break. Because we know that a lot of kids didn't attend school. And school was not like school at bed. So, you know, it's just something that we need to keep in the back.
Right. In addition, our sixth grade was, uh, we had the highest percentage of high need students in it. We had the largest, especially Asian students in the grade.
And we have done a deep dive into attendance, not only of the students, but of also the staff.
Yeah.
Both have significant impact.
Liz, I'm going to move to Matt.
It's a word, I'm going to use the yellow. I'm not quite sure how the SPAC is scored, whether it's percentage or point score, I'm not quite sure. But the word approaching is a marshmallow. Uh, you talk about the numbers of coaching, I mean, the percentages, hypothetically, two percent or three percent of like the level of approaching. What, what is this marshmallow there?
There, there is a range for each level. And, uh, I don't know, Mr. Davis or Lengorn, you speak to the range within each level, but it, it, the approaching indicates that they're they are in between. And this is a marshmallow, probably type answer for you. But there between does not meet and have never stayed. But there is a range for each of the levels. We have the, the upper level range and lower level range within, within each.
They're within a year of the grade level. Some could be one test question away from meeting the standard. Some could be as much as, you know, close to a year away and some can be in between. Six months, four months of grade level standards. So they are approaching it. So.
And so what they have is there's this scale score and it's broken into different subcategories. So for like English Language Arts, there's a list. So there's different subcategories. So some typically fall into that approaching range, may have a subcategory score of what we would consider exceeds. Um, and then maybe one that's approaching. So it's not like this approaching across the world, like one who scales what this is where this kid fits into the socks. There's strengths and weaknesses, and it like contains that number and puts them into one of those four categories.
Last week when we visited with some Fitch folks, I asked pretty much the same question. There was some students where especially youth students who are deeply impacted by women with disability and are finding mitigate trouble with education funding. Even if it's achieved, may not definitely certain academic level. So I'm going to ask you, but approach, in a perfect world, in this poor playground's mind, how much you're approaching not meeting, how much you're approaching meeting? Can we, can we drill down at some point? Because my sense is while we're going to do it for every child and whether they're an IEP person who's not going to achieve the academic standard, but we can give them the life scares to live a great life. That I'm, I'm guessing we're going to be focusing a lot on the approach to, to, to really get them on the path.
So I'll go back to something that you said, where there are some senses, you know, you're, you're going to focus on every student to make sure that they can, uh, achieve as much as they can within a year. However, my, my hope would be that we do see that the distribution of does not be an approaching moves to the right. So then we see that more students, something that, that many of the students who did not meet this year would be approaching next year. Maybe that they're approaching this year would be the needs and needs that we've seen. But that is.
Well, I think we, I think we will agree on that. I'm just looking for the next year, when we do this again next year, that we can see if we can squeeze some stuff out. One of the places where it's exactly, we don't have special needs, but where there are special needs at five oh fours. They don't fit into any of the categories of the register on your thing. And if these individuals with women disabilities, et cetera, are special needs students, I don't know how we account for them. It's just, it's not a complaint. It's just something to your point. Thank you very much.
A five oh four is considered. Yeah. They're, they're proven.
No, no.
No.
Five oh fours are not.
Changed. They do not do. Well, they're not part of the high needs.
Right.
They're part of the high needs.
No, they're not. They are not part of the high needs.
I mean, there are some five oh fours that are also special.
No, no. So if I, I actually know the answer to this.
Okay.
Ready? So the five oh four is just actually to make sure that a student's civil rights are being met. That's actually the law of the, of the five oh four. So it doesn't, that means that they don't meet the criteria of an IEP, that they need some specific either way to instruct. But they, but they don't need high, yeah, they don't, they don't need high needs.
But sometimes you see a five oh four student do go through the PPT process and eventually go into specialized. We do see that some of the time.
We're not there. Any. Any more questions on the ELA? Alright. Take us to math.
Math, here we go.
Here we go.
Alright, so again, a very similar slide to ELA, except now we're talking about math with slightly different numbers. Total number of students who took the test back in May was eight hundred seventy-three. Of those, sixth, eighth, grade six through eight, thirty-seven percent did not meet the standard. Thirty-one percent were approaching the standard, twenty percent met. Twelve percent exceeded. So those who were at benchmark were above with thirty-two percent. But again, we see that potential there with that thirty-one percent that are approaching. Breakdown by grade level, grade six, seven, and eight. See that are the largest number of students that, this test were three hundred ninety, grade six, two hundred seventy-three. Followed up in grade seven, two hundred ninety-one, grade eight. But grade six, let's focus on grade six for a moment. Forty-four percent of our students in grade six. Thirty-four percent were approaching or getting closer, meeting that standard, forty percent met and seven percent exceeded. We had twenty-one percent in grade six were at or above. And that was, I gotta say, when I, when I saw the initial numbers of somewhere else. Quite disappointing, but after a period of disappointment, I said, okay. What are we going to do? Right? It, it, it is, it's not where I thought it would be. I thought that your, our, our students would, uh, show what they had a little better, but we so, um, just though I was not, Susan knows when I saw these. Here we go. So grade seven, thirty-two percent did not meet, twenty-seven percent were approaching. Twenty-seven met, fourteen percent exceeded. So forty-one percent were, were at or above with, again, bringing up that twenty-seven percent. If those, those numbers to shift right were in much better shape. Grade eight, thirty-four percent did not meet standard, thirty-one percent were getting close, approaching. Twenty percent met, fifteen percent exceeded. We're told thirty-five percent were at or. Again, a comparison of our high need students, how they did in comparison to our non-high need students. We had four hundred ninety-nine high need students take the test. Mathematics and three hundred seventy-four non-high needs. So the green bars were those students who qualifies, uh, the category high needs. See that fifty-two percent of our high need students did not meet the standard. Thirty percent were approaching, thirteen percent met, five percent exceeded. For the non-high need students, we had eighteen percent did not meet the standard, thirty-two percent were approaching, twenty-nine percent met, twenty-one percent exceeded. So again, we can see that there is a disparity how our students with high needs performed on this test.
There's also this pattern of approaching where they're kind of neck and neck. Right? The equal amounts of high needs and non-high needs, not approaching. Which could be looked at as hopeful.
I, I think that we are we're hopeful and optimistic with, with the plan that we're going to be. That we're going to create in place. A deeper dive into our high need students performed on this summit of assessment. Serious learners. Seventy-three percent of them did not meet the standard, twenty-three percent were approaching and four percent of one student did meet. Not. Standard. Special education students. Seventy, seventy-six percent did not meet the standard, nineteen percent were approaching. And four percent met it, one percent, two students did exceed it. Those students for free and reduced lunch. Forty percent did not meet the standard, thirty-four percent were approaching, eighteen percent met, and eight percent exceeded.
How much of it are written questions? That an English language learner would call it difficult? Is there a large percentage?
There, there is a fair amount of text.
Problem solving.
All problems.
Not all, but a lot. And directions. The directions is another place, Rita. And that's why those interim assessments are so important, not only that we give them, but they're also that they, they work through them and teachers analyze the data with the kids so that they understand the.
And oftentimes there, there's a fair amount of texts and the choices for answers too, if they have a choice. And, and it's not always A, B, C, or D sometimes. Which is the best answer. It's A and B, it's C and A. So, yeah, so it is, is complex. Here's how we did in math, according to other middle schools that are that are BRG. You can see, again, we were, we were fifth overall in our dirt. They overall was at three. Like Manchester.
That was anomalous, isn't it? And they were like the lowest end for ELA.
I wouldn't think.
Maybe just top half.
Twenty-six percent.
The period.
Yeah. It makes you wonder, doesn't it?
Alright, we take a look at our, uh, breakdown of how students from different races performed on, on each of the SPACs. Some of the assessors, English Language Arts and Mathematics. Let's move from left to right. You can see that, uh, that, that just orient you that blue bars are how students did in English Language Arts by race and the green bars are how they did back. So we see overall, uh, the students did better in the English Language Arts than they did in math. And, you know, as, as you mentioned earlier, the impact that COVID had. To me, I don't think it's a surprise, it's more impactful, negative by mathematics because of the, often the direct structure to, to achieve math, whereas reading and writing oftentimes can be done as a natural part of a child's, students, where the best they read. So we see, uh, English Language Arts, our white students, fifty-six percent of them were at or above benchmark in English Language Arts. Forty-two percent in math, our Hispanic, Latino, twenty-seven percent at benchmark in English. And English Language Arts, seventy percent in math. Our multi-racial students, thirty eight percent achieved benchmark or above. English Language Arts, twenty four percent in math. Our Asian students, the forty seven of them, I think it's important to notice the.
The numbers.
Number of students for each each uh each race and population here. Forty seven Asian students, sixty seven percent of them were at or above benchmark in English Language Arts, and fifty nine percent at math. Black or African American, sixty five students, thirty five percent of them achieved at or above benchmark in English Language Arts, and twenty percent. It's interesting to for us to continue to look at the overlay of how each of these these areas uh to these racial categories is impacted and making sure that our our approach in the classroom is both responsive, but also considering uh the impact that high needs has.
So before we go to next generation, Matthew, did you have?
Yeah, I did. I'm just wondering, we know that the kids is that some of this is due to COVID. We just don't know how much it is due. And so I'm wondering if you have another chart here. I don't know that the board needs a better. I'm thinking of the user to have a couple of years summary. How we do only about pre-COVID, that would give you a way to compel it to to see if they're dropping. You know, the second question is on the high need circles, if you did a five oh four on that one. Some I'm not, it's not in the instructions, it's just a query.
Well, if you're unable to, that would answer the question.
Yeah, you'd have to.
Well, I'm not even sure if it identifies it. I have to look closely.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the first question is if you guys need to use.
We did look at historical, when we looked at it, data the as a district. So when they categorized everything together for ELA now, you know, including SAT and SFS, we were able to look across the years and at that target too.
We did attempt to do that as well when we. In regards to this, and we just felt that it really didn't capture anything that could be useful because last year, we really our first year together as a most work, or how can we?
Last couple of years, but last year probably full on.
Was closer to being in normal.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Data available.
Yeah.
I would say there there is some value in looking at historically, but I think it's also important to consider what the makeup of our of our student population is in comparison to what it was back then. I think that is true.
I think I'm sure it has. We see a change in community. Some people might hopefully suggest only number of people who did not meet and criticize this for that. But if we have a deeper understanding of the impacts of COVID, that gives a pretty cool answer to that.
The other problem there is that forgotten middle school that it opened in the middle of COVID. So really, this is the first year of their data, really, as a functioning, as a one school, all middle school together, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna recognize Liz and Dean.
I think the other thing that we need to make sure we protect is how many of these students were enrolled in rotten public schools. We do have such a high number of trans students from military and other things we need to know. All right, how many of these kids have really gone for rotten public schools? And you know, who was, you know, who were just entering in sixth grade, coming from other school districts, other states. Remember as a military kid going from here to the state of Washington, it was very different expectations. And so it was it's tough, and that makes this type of data have a slight skew to it. I just want us to make sure that we are, you know, we know that there is kids coming from different states, countries, and trying to get them all back on the first page. I'm necessarily worried honestly about the sixth grade as I am.
About a twelve, fourteen hundred net difference coming and going annually out of a four thousand just forty five hundred population. It is very significant.
So math teacher, math superintendent, how many percentage that that don't ask me to do.
It's it's over a quarter, you know, it's between a quarter and a third.
Twenty five to thirty percent. And that is that is significant, that impacts our ability to really have a a you know, it's just one of those components that we need to keep present. When we start to look at this data.
Well, I I think I think to your point, and Dean, absolutely, but like to your point is is that when we take the data, we need to understand, we have to also hold all of those lenses. That one, this is really, I think, your first year to really be able to collect data as a rotten middle school. I mean, I know that you guys have been open since twenty twenty one. To be so precise. So and so you're bringing you're bringing groups of people together at a different um and and to make that mesh is one. What's going on with the pandemic? And then also, what does it mean for kids to kind of come in and out? And so it does, like, we can't, we need to see this as, ugh, but we need to also hold um the fact that you've done some some good work. I mean, you've got some people who are at or above. I mean, like, it's not all good and doing, um but I think we have to hold the knowledge about when we look at data, we can't be so specific for this.
One comment and a question. Coming off of this, since we're low to take this data compared with any earlier data we have from our mid our prior middle school. Because, hey, oranges. We're still very happy to compare ourselves with the dot to other schools in the dirt. So I think that should also be taken.
I I don't disagree with you. I I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, because I don't know anything about, you know, what's going on in their district.
That's right.
Same middle school, middle school, right?
That's right.
All right, now my question, and this is not directed to these specific topics. But because the racial categories come up all over the place, and because we place importance on them, I just have a question. Because I don't think I I know, I presume that we identify children by the way they're they identify or their parents or guardians have identified them, right? Okay. Is there ever an occasion where the school district has countered that identification? In what purpose? I ask that because in my encounters uh with people from the Dominican Republic, someone who was not familiar might look at somebody, many people from the from the DR and say, oh, they're black, or they may actually naturally prove that it's African American, like that they're Afro-Curien or whatever, black, right? So but they would identify as Hispanic. So do we go with that, or do we say, no, that's a black child?
I think we go.
No, we go with their somewhere. Okay, I just, it's a small point, it's for the history.
We gave them, there are three hundred five students in the eighth grade. And yet, two ninety seven took this test. You get counted for the twelve students against you for the COVID, didn't make the test.
We are north of ninety five, ninety five percent are better.
You don't.
Right.
So we work hard to get to that ninety five percent are better. We really work hard.
Good question. I didn't I didn't even bother about that.
Sometimes parents will ask to opt out.
They did have a handle, but they did.
Do they have an option? Yes.
Well, they can keep their kid at home during the testing windows.
Even to the makeup. Could you do makeup?
Yeah, we did do.
Absolutely.
Go for it, sorry.
All right. So the next generation science standards assessment, this is a assessment at the middle school level, it's only going to eighth grader. All right, we had two hundred ninety seven students take it to the this this chart, you most have colors, the the counts of this one right left for this one and the percentage to the right. All right, so we had two hundred ninety, two hundred ninety seven students take it. I'm going to move to the right hand side of the chart. Twenty one percent did not meet the standard for the NGSS assessment, thirty two percent were approaching, getting closer, forty one percent met, and five percent exceeded, so we had forty six at or above at benchmark.
And this is an assessment that captures reading, writing, math, problem solving, manipulating data and doing an experiment on the computer. It's really something to behold. It's, you know.
I I think we need a little bit more here, but you have the at or above one hundred and thirty eight should also have does not mean approaching standard at one fifty. I mean, if you're gonna put the at or above, add that up, you could also.
But the approaching could more likely be closer to.
You don't know, but you have to see the graph. There's, it could be a range.
So the state calls it, I think, at or above is the determination from the state.
Right, but I meant, we're still having here.
Right, you could do that mathematically, yeah.
They're both, they're both really worth.
Right, they're all really important. But I mean, it'd be good to see that, you know, you see the forty six percent at or above, but then above that should be the percentage of.
Um we had two slides which were in your packet that have the high need ready to assess, but as we were going through uh our prep uh for this presentation, we had some questions about uh a couple of pieces of data, so we're going to work those. So now we'll look at the how the the breakdown by race for into NGSS assessment at eighth grade. So uh again, the population totals are in parentheses along the bottom. There are a hundred fifty two white students who took this of them, fifty seven percent were at or above the benchmarks. And fifty eight Hispanic Latino students take this, and of them, twenty eight percent were at or above the benchmark. Figure nine multiracial students, thirty one percent were at or above the benchmark. Twenty two Asian students, sixty four percent were at or above benchmark, and twenty one black, African American students took this, and forty three percent were at.
This is growing on me.
Any question, I'm skip them.
The dirt.
Oh, correct. Thank you.
He he was listening to to Dean on this.
We're not doing.
None of them. Those two we need to rework. And there's a bit of a lag in change, I I thought I heard this twice. All right, so in our dirt, uh we were we were fourth. And yes, yes, yeah, we have to do it. Um you're one point behind the state. So you'd like to be another one, too.
It's that burning competition. Yeah.
Yep. How many kids is that?
I mean, just five, it's five kids.
It's five.
Personal tutoring.
That was, doesn't buy any, that was the old CMT philosophy, right? Any question in regard to the science, pretty much, perhaps?
Hey, let me just check online.
There you go. I'm back. I'm back. Come back, there she is.
I don't see anyone.
Checked out.
All right. We're good.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
So we have a a few areas of of general focus for growth. And the first area that I'm going to address is the academics. And I will say that um last week I was thrilled to have the opportunity to attend performance matters forum that's put on by the state of Connecticut and um sat through three out of the four workshops really really relevant and important to learn. Um I was pretty impressed by the work that East Hartford has done and Madison Public Schools creating crosswalks of um interim assessment blocks with their curriculum and planning. When the IEP's interim assessment blocks are focused, uh interim assessment blocks as as they're called, depending on the type that they are. Where they're given the curriculum, when they're given, and what happens after them, right? So something that we are going to do uh monthly moving forward is having data teams in math and language arts. And we'll also do it in science, but perhaps not question. Uh but this is really important because we need our teachers to look at the standard across the board for these interim assessments and say, okay, how do our students do? What are the questions that they did well on? Where are those areas? Where are they not meeting where they need to? And then being able to utilize tools to have focused instruction and specific lessons that are given. There's there's actually something that's available to teachers in the state of Connecticut free of charge, all tools for teachers. And these are um really, they're they're, these are lessons which are designed for to address specific questions in the SFS that have been created by teachers injured uh by a national consortium as being high quality to address the areas that we that's what we're gonna do.
Better than teachers pay teachers of interest.
A heart. So uh we're we're going to give it a interim assessment block, get teachers together, uh review the results and say, okay, what what are the lessons that we need to? What are the prescribed lessons that we need to be given that see our students do?
Can I also add that with NGSS, the the stress is on fifth grade, eighth grade, and eleventh grade, and yet there's enough of those interim blocks that coincide with the curriculum that we've developed. So grades three, four, and five have mapped out what assessments they'll be using, just like six, seven, and eight can also do, and nine, ten, and eleven. So that every grade, they're really experiencing it, so they don't really get time off.
Right. And as we transition to the open side edge, I think we're going to see that that is in agreement around.
Which is a new, new name.
Yeah.
New name, but it's very similar framework.
That's true. All right, so you know, we're, because they're already looking at the summit of scores that that you see here, but they're they're seeing it down to the student level. They're saying, how are the students that are in front of them right now doing? How do they do? And how do the students that they had last year, how do they do? All right, and and that second bullet that you see there on the data meetings, that that's exactly what I I described um previous.
You have a question. Neither of us, I know that they probably can't hear me, but we're online, but um at one time rotten middle schools had a block where the teachers met by teams. You have that period to discuss all this, that no longer is in our daily.
So when we had the old middle school schedule, we had the luxury of having much larger spaces and more teachers.
Right.
There were two blocks in a day at which on a daily basis, each teachers had one block for their their plan and one block to be as a team.
Yes.
Or as a grade level discipline. And uh we no longer, we are able to maintain the every other day team meeting, which is a teacher for science, a teacher for social studies, language arts, and mathematics. No longer are we able to mandate or provide a plan which grade level uh by discipline. We have been able to achieve uh in in some cases just to try to the to create the schedule in such a way in which the teacher's own contractual plan happens to coincide with their grade level discipline. Um we have nothing to do with that.
And they do tend to work together.
How can we fix the schedule like it used to be to get that to that? Because that was so.
I'm gonna I'm gonna tell you that you're not you're not gonna like.
It's not in the front.
We need, and work last rates.
Oh, I I agree with that.
And and then 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 we need staff that reads their role. Yes.
Um Peter, I noticed in your academic, you've got limited to language arts, math, and science. Why isn't social studies included there? So they do a lot of reading and writing at first, especially in non.
We are going to partner with them.
Okay.
But and and actually these are the ones that we're focused on, but there there may be opportunities as we work with language arts um to say, you know what, this this IAB could be. Could be given in the social studies classroom, this has to do with, with reading, nonfiction, or. A, a writing and nonfiction, so that, that could be something that we, we distribute. As a matter of fact, um as we look at science, science is up there in the sense of N D S S. But there are also times in which science teachers have taken on an I A B, for example, uh statistics. Um, they're reading charts and graphs in, in science and, and analyzing statistics from the math I A B, so I. That's something that, that.
I just really think it's important that we see the interdisciplinary approach.
Yep.
Um, and I really.
And I think you'll see it later in our.
Okay.
Our presentation.
I think Romilius Minor, his work the past couple of years has been all about that.
Yeah.
So he, when he was visiting Rock Middle School for the couple of days, and then he meets with them online every month. His work is about that interdisciplinary approach, and he shows the approaching into the social studies classroom, into the science classroom. As well as the L A and how to access literacy, reading and writing.
And his work of that.
And he has.
And he also.
Mr. Davis, you can take that off your list.
Also at the conference that you went, that you attended, I heard people.
For you, so it's not their lap at the conference last night.
He was at another conference at Igniting the Change.
Yes.
Several of us went to that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Whenever I, I spend time with them, I, I definitely got the understanding of the pitch, the structure and strategies.
I'm just making sure that there's not friends. I'll just do this.
Maybe if you put something in, if anyone asks a question, it's to tell you in chat.
So anyone who's online, and if you would like to ask a question, just throw a, a hand or a please or a question mark in the chat. Because your. Leader is having multiple difficulties when it comes to doing this, so. I'm owning that, so continue on, Peter.
Uh. The next one, in, in Greece, you said Greenbox for all, I, I think you're all fairly familiar with the I. I've heard of Greenbox, right, it's an uh online um. Uh program that adjusts either the students' math levels and, and, and works to intuitively instruct. And we started getting back to this last year. And, and this year we're, we're taking this out with what's working out, like break from the start where. Every student is uh, every math teacher is, is emphasizing the use of Greenbox. And we, we know from the studies that have been done with Greenbox that there is a direct correlation with the number of lessons and, and um. Units that are completely in the box uh to achieve an increase on the. Initially, uh over the summer, we had many of our math teachers take part in a, a book club called Building Thinking Classrooms. The book is written by Peter Willand-Dolly, he's from Canada, and um he's, he's really taking a transformative approach to teaching mathematics. There are fourteen different pieces to this, but, but in just a brief overview nutshell, if you come and visit the Building Thinking Classroom. It looks incredibly, you will see students standing in small groups, working on. On various problems, uh but they're all working on vertical. Boards, but it might be a window, it might be a whiteboard, um but they're, they're vertical, non-permanent surfaces. And, and it, it's important that they're non-permanent, it can't be a, a flip chart, right? It's gotta be something where a kid can start to write and then say, oh, you know what, that's, that's not what, that's, that doesn't make sense, it's part of discussion. So, because what happens is you see that, that kids are, the students are, are much more active, willing to take risks as they, we start to write. Every, every group is randomly selected. And to me, it's randomly selected, like we've always been very. So, the strategic and, and purposeful, how we group kids. What they found with research is that the students actually um it, it, it dropped social barriers within, within the classroom. They were much more engaged because they knew that they had to actually work and engage. They couldn't stand back and say, oh, you know, well, that, that kid's gonna do it. And, and because they're standing. They can't relax and. Every, every student in this group has a role, there's a scribe. Um, there is an inquirer who is the one that would ask questions of, of a teacher. Uh, there is a manager who makes sure that all the, the other students are on task and, and um. There's one other role in which that student would share outward with the rest of the class. And, and what they found is that they, they start with. Non-mathematical questions that really are um puzzling, I don't know if you've been. Back in the, the nineties, they had these mind manger cards where really big here, really engaged. What they found is that, get them started with those, and then we switch to the mathematical questions. And um it, it increases the students' engagement and their enthusiasm for doing that. One question that teachers had that I heard as they, as they started this year was, will we see? The results that we, at, at, at least the results we've seen from traditional instruction on our unit tests and quizzes. They're a little concerned. The initial reports that I'm, I'm getting from them is that the students are doing at least as well. And what was most noticeable and outstanding to them was that the number of what they like called spicer questions, those higher level or thinking type of questions. There was an increased um success rate in those, but, but more importantly to them, they found that more students were attempting them. So it used to be that some students, you know, I, I can't even. Now they are attempting them. And when you see, and, and the students have to change roles, right, they, they're randomly picked each day, I'm going on too long, sorry, but. I'm excited about this. Students have to shift roles and that, the really. One, one interesting piece to me is that you might have a student, let's say a special ed student who struggles with math. That student becomes a scribe. That student has to listen to what the others are saying, speakers are saying. That student writes what they're saying, and that, and as a result, they start to become involved in the problem, process, the problem in the process. The, the, the problem solver, whereas before they might just stand back and wait to be prompted by a teacher. Especially a teacher. It's um, it, it's powerful, and I, I think that we may see this, this approach spread to other disciplines as well. So. Will and Joel, uh it's, it's a, like L I L E J, I, I can. I will, I will.
I'll send you the link.
So um. Yeah, so that's, that's another area of, of uh focus, area of focus growth. We're continuing to use Lexi Power Up, but we're really drilling down even further this year in our, our tier two material interventions. On how we're using Lexi's Power Up for, for language arts. Support and, and achievement with our English Language Arts. Initially, we have uh our Falcon Academy Home and Pelts, which is where we have Fitch High School students who will be coming over supervised by. The G M S staff member to help anyone, any student wants to after, and the homework help. We also have the After School Learning Center, which is much more prescribed, where we have tutors, we have teachers, fifty teachers or tutors. We call them tutors for after school purposes, but in math and language art to each grade level. In which this is an extension of the tier three supports where uh we identify students who need that support. Communicate and partner with the parents to get them to commit to attend after school because that's often a barrier. Uh, but we were thrilled to learn over the weekend.
A million dollars just came in.
I, I.
High dosage tutoring.
Can you even extend this further into?
Saturdays, I said you might have to serve them pizza or do.
Saturday, uh morning academy for mathematics and also allowing us to design and deliver quality summer. Program. We're thrilled about that.
Matthew?
So Parks and Rec, I attended a meeting, Trails community, nothing to do with trails, they told me that they're. Want, looking for partners uh who use the old Fitch Middle School. And they don't want to give a program, they want to find out if public community organizations might else use that building, things such as tutoring. So I threw that out to you, they say lots of department.
Peter? Yes, um, I had a few questions, but you're about, what's the average class size?
The average class size, um, in, in.
Yeah.
I would say that it. The, the average class size is roughly twenty, but there are some pockets we've got twenty five and somewhere less, and that's a product of. Space and um they trying to design a schedule that will work in that space. Because we find that, you know, if you're, if you're six graders. If we've got. Two days for six years to live in the gym, that, that impacts um certain periods where they can get four classes or, or less. So it's very complex, but I would say an average.
You do see classes at twenty four dollars.
Even twenty five.
Yeah.
So to me, if you say you need ten more classes, that, that should be a goal of the new board, is to find those spaces. Whether, I don't know how, I know at the high school or the new section, they have these large vice principal suites and so forth. Some way find more space. I mean, I know you use black box, but I would rather see classrooms. And the other option is, Fitch High School is nearby, there are lots more students there than the room passed.
I, I.
Go there. We, we need more classrooms because.
We do, and, and our black box is being used to bathroom right now, right? So.
Every space.
Every space, it, there are some, there are some periods in our school day where there is not an empty classroom.
Oh, I know, and I know it's very difficult for the teachers to move constantly and never feel like this is their classroom, you can't take anything off, you can't.
And, and that, you know, that's, that's back on our, on our culture.
Construction that happened during that time period under that director who's no longer there. Had the same mistake happen over and over again, Ledger has the same problem. And they wouldn't allow for more spare footage, they made sure that every bit of space was used a hundred percent of the time. Otherwise you couldn't get the bonds.
Right, only the towns that we like rented those, those. You know, that part of the state, if you use money and build.
What they wanted and what they needed, right? But you're right, we have to get creative.
You're gonna have to get creative and find some classroom space and some permanent classroom.
Good day, what's up next?
Alright, so um the first topic that I want to talk about for our growth mindset, right? We're trying to move as Bass explained, moving those students from approaching to meeting standard. And what we've noticed is um since the pandemic, our chronic absenteeism rate has not rebounded. As it is across the state, we're above twenty five percent of our student population who is chronically absent. So that obviously equates to less days in a classroom with a qualified teacher getting that instruction. So that starts to accumulate when we get towards the end of the year, by May, they've missed a lot of pieces along the way, so. Um, and unfortunately, our high need students uh tend to have a uh higher rate of absenteeism. Again, so, so we're really looking at those, that population of students to see how we can support them better, to get them in the building each and every day. Um, so we, we have two kind of approaches to it systematically, and then also kind of holistically, looking at a more specific to these students. So uh systematically this year, we are really looking to track the data. Uh, we are fortunate this year, we do have an attendance secretary who will be focusing strictly on student attendance. Uh, which allows us to identify patterns and trends a lot sooner. When a student is out two or three days in a row, we're aware of that, whereas in the past, that may have slipped down until they were at five or six. So we can get ahead of that very quickly. Um, robo calls have been going out, but now with the ability of our attendance secretary, we're making personal phone calls. So the parents, the parents are knowing that someone is at the school looking for them and, and wanting them to be there, so. Uh, we think that that's a very important piece. Uh, we continue to send home letters when students get to four absences, when students get to nine absences. Uh, we are doing home visits, just the principals are out with uh counselors, or sometimes our S R O. Show up at houses and, and ask how can we support, how can we get our students to school each day? So those are kind of more of the systematic approaches. Uh, but one of our main goals this year is to really focus in on our attendance meetings. Uh, so when students reach that threshold, uh we will be having an attendance meeting with our administrator, uh counselor, parents, and the student. And sit down and really start to look at what are the barriers, right? What is it that's preventing you from coming to school each and every day? And as we know, that, that in our community, there's a lot of different barriers uh for some students. Um, it may be anxiety coming to a big building, starting the day with nine hundred students. So developing plans with these students where they can meet with their counselors in the morning, we're gonna do a check in with the counselor, start your day small, branch out to a larger day. Um, uh, simple strategy, sometimes parents are leaving for work before the student has to catch the bus. So talking to those students, do that morning strategy, what, how are you waking up? Do you have your drapes pulled in the morning, or do you have the sun coming in in the morning? How, where is your alarm? Is it near your bed, is it over on the dresser? Simple things that, that hopefully can get them up and out of bed and, and to school for us. Um, some students uh may need more than that, and so we're working with our counselors, we're working with our school-based health center. Uh, doing recommendations perhaps for counseling, students are dealing with uh more issues than, than we're able to deal with, uh get the right there in the school. Um, sometimes academics can be the barrier, it becomes overwhelming, you know, then it starts to domino, you miss one day, now you're a day behind, now you start to feel more pressured to catch up. So um having our L A and math intervention classes for students to help them feel comfortable in those classes. Um, it, it's, it's on here as a bullet, but our power up classes, we. We realize that students sometimes are overwhelmed by the, by the amount of work and the homework, because when they get home, they have other responsibilities and they're not able to focus. So our power up class is a thirty eight minute class um that allows students with the teacher to go through power school. Take a look at what assignments that may be missing, get the support to get them going. Uh, it also allows for extension through Greenbox and some of these other programs.
And enrichment for some kids, we had some parents calling us about wanting enrichment during that, and we've been able to do that too.
Exactly. So it works into their normal schedule.
So what, what do students do for the thirty eight minutes?
So they can have enrichment, and they can be working on their work as well. And also our teachers are working on some of the executive functioning skills during that time, helping organize. Look at how long-term projects, how to break them down, uh really preparing them for, for their time in high school as well. Um, some other barriers may be uh with the families. Um, we have just opened up um our United Way Food Pantry, so again, knowing that some of my families are dealing with food insecurities. Really supporting families, making better connections. Um, again, with parents, knowing that we are all in this together, working to get students to school each and every day. Um, being more visible in our community, first night, Ranford Manor events, uh we'll be in bumpers and books this weekend. Really just trying to get parents to understand that we're, we're here to support kids in every single way. Um, I know Ms. Singleton will, will speak a little spit later, but also giving students more things to come to school for. Uh, more clubs, more activities, more things that they're, they're interested, get them there every day. Uh, more days that they're in school, the more days they're with a qualified teacher, the, the better the achievement we're gonna see on our aspects of it. Um, that leads into kind of that next bullet, which is student buy-in. Um, we want our students to, to wanna come to school, so we're really leaning in this year to our um. P B I S, which is our SOAR, be safe, open-minded, accountable, and respectful and responsible. Um, so we have our SOAR assemblies each quarter where we get the teams together. Uh, we build kind of that community, we talk about expectations, we talk about things that are going well. Uh, they have a forum to say their concerns, what they're seeing in, in the school, what they'd like to improve. Um, we have SOAR tickets when students, the teachers see students doing well, they're, they're giving out these SOAR tickets. Uh, they put them in the bucket at the end of the week, they get their name selected, they can win a prize. So we're getting, really getting students to think about the building as theirs, it's their community, it's their, their school. Um, school spirit is, is a, a real focus this year, we have a very active student council. Uh, we've got Spirit Week coming up, we just had um Pinkout event, students really, for breast cancer awareness, really.
I tried to get those things in board notes so you can get a glimpse.
Yeah, so, but the, the students were involved as well. Um, our theater program, the all-time, this is our, our highest enrollment, students wanting to be involved in extracurriculars. Um, every Friday is Falcon Friday, wearing red and black, we talk about that, we get them to, to be more excited about coming to school. We've got chess, gardening club, dance, yoga, fitness programs using our fitness rooms. Um, so again, addressing that absenteeism, but by really trying to get them interested in coming to school. Uh, when they're connected, we, we're hoping that they're gonna take pride in, in their, their school, in their community, but also in themselves, in that growth. And that's when we'll start to see better buy-in that, that the test. And that's when we'll start to see better buy-in, that that the test matters and they wanna give us their, their best efforts there.
When Ron, you know, school, one of the drawbacks in my mind was that there were fewer teams, so fewer students would be on basketball team. And you know, so and so on. And they, they told us that, well, we'll have a lot of interim marbles. Are there a lot of interim marbles? And the, and the kids can come to school, I mean, a lot of times the kids are in the school because they wanna be there. So you do, it's really true.
And we have twenty-first century grant in both the middle school and the high school that offers lots of different clubs. You know, there are things that teachers enjoying and kids enjoy, we surveyed to find out. Um, that chess club, I just sent you some information on that, so that was good.
So when you say we've got chronic absenteeism above twenty-five percent. Carrying that with what I heard about the space. I put these two things together and say, my goodness, if we actually got all the kids in, we wouldn't have any. Or.
They're still, they're all scheduled to class.
They're scheduled, so we know.
So they're there, but okay.
No, they're not secretly crossing their fingers.
I mean, I know this school was built a little on the small side, and I find it ironic, actually, because a lot of people are critics. Of the school construction project overall was saying, why are we spending all this money to cover this school population decline? Right, and what they don't understand is you could trend downward, but something like this, school's population level is zero. No, that's a false extension. It does this, we all know, so.
That's true.
Whether properly sized, whether we're wise or not, I don't know. Are we in a glut of some sort of popular school population glut at that age group? Or is this gonna be the way for the future?
So. I would say that um. The population say that they used to design a school. Was done prior to General Dynamics announcement, they're gonna hire between fifteen, twenty-five thousand workers.
And they didn't know.
But even before that, they never, they never did it on.
Right, um, and what's wild is and scary at the same time is that if they vote. Gets transferred to South Base in London and they happen to have a larger population of middle school students that are coming in.
We just never knew.
Just don't. So that's, that's the crazy wild part. So Mr. Davis?
So, uh, second focus that you can see up here, it's supporting teacher learning, but I, I wanna kind of cut it a little bit off script and just say, you know. I think it's important for us uh, to keep in mind is how we interpret the data really influences how we respond. And as we're looking at that data, um, things obviously that I think is is prevalent that we can see is is that, you know, our population, as we're saying, is growing, but it's also changed. Um, you know, ten, ten to fifteen years ago, we were a mid to low apartment school and now we're a mid to high poverty school. And so why is that important to the points that we have here? It's important because now we've really gotta look at who we are serving and make sure that we are providing what they actually need. Um, and so it's imperative that we talk about, you know, how we address, fund charges math. That we continue to have high expectations for all our students regardless if they were, um, you know. Below, approaching. Man, we'll see, we've gotta have high expectations for all students. We've gotta make sure that our curriculum, and this is where that tier one piece. But our curriculum um, aligns with those, with our uh, our standards, right? We've got the SBAQ that is aligned with uh, the Common Core standards, our district standards. And so if students are not achieving that, then we really have to look at our, our curriculum and our instruction and figure out what the gaps are. Um, and then finally, we, we have to uh, have this continuous focus of monitoring students' progress. This would be our vision, if we, if we're constantly looking at the data, as Mr. Bass was saying. Um, providing opportunity for our teachers to look at that data and use that data to, to drive their instruction. Is is critical to build the ultimate success of our, our students. So again, we wanna make sure that we are challenging our students, uh, that we're providing these authentic experiences. To the point that uh, Peter was saying with regards to that thinking classroom, uh, according to this minor, those examples, we wanna center on student strengths, not their weaknesses. And we wanna really focus on that, how do we differentiate and prioritize personalized um, instruction? So we plan to do that in a variety of ways. I think one of the first ways that I think is critical for us is um, the adoption of our many observations and full observations that we're going to be doing. You know, we're, we're committed to getting into the classroom multiple times. Um, to be able to see what our teachers are actually, we need to know exactly what um. The learning partnership looks like, that teaching and learning process, process is really looking like. So we can obviously offer up some feedback, um, get opportunities to sit down and have professional dialogue after those. Um, many observations, so we can have conversations about, okay, what's this the data say? What does your instruction look like? Is it working? Um, and to the point that was mentioned earlier, um, we really haven't had the opportunity to do that on a regular basis due to the pandemic, but now we do. We've been there uh, in, in the building, you know, fully um, last year. And so now being able to kind of push into these classrooms and uh, really have meaningful conversations with our staff, I think is very critical. We'll center to, center on, you know, our, our students. Professional development, as was discussed uh, uh, earlier, um, Peter's point, but I just wanna emphasize a little bit more. Which we really wanna have ongoing professional development. And I think it was, I don't know which one of you said it, but it was the important point of let's make it interdisciplinary. So literacy does not necessarily have to solely occur um, in the language arts classroom. We have to integrate it throughout, so it should be happening in social studies, it should be happening in science, but we also can do that with our math as well. So we've gotta think about how do we create a more integrated approach to um, meeting the needs of our students? So we can start to see our scores go up. Remember, we're talking about an achievement gap, but it's also an opportunity gap as well that we have to um, focus on. So promoting cross-curricular integration of mathematics concepts. Uh, we'll focus on real-world applications is key for us. And so having those opportunities for our students to go out and apply, this is what we, we look at the SBAQ scores. One of the areas that we are uh, uh, low across the board is that we, we are so are not able to apply their math. And they're not trying those type of questions because they have to, you know, that make cotton, they've gotta think more. So giving them that experience within the classroom is critical to that. Um, we wanna continue to uh, look at our curriculum and again, enhancing it. Uh, one of the things that we are uh, looking to do is um, make sure that we've got that vertical alignment happening. Um, so we wanna make sure not only are we teaching in terms of um, the horizontal curriculum, making sure that each teacher is teaching basically the same thing. And making sure that the students' um, skill development is occurring, but we also wanna know what skills do they need to have to be successful in the um. Following grade, so that's gonna be very uh, critical in that, in that work as well. And then the last piece, um, I would say that's important to this, is that we have to be able to um, respond to the needs of our students. Um, as early as possible, and so um. We know that some students are gonna require some intervention and support. Uh, and so what does that look like? Well, first of all, it should look like that it's timed, right? And 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 it's accessible. So making sure that we are first meeting the needs at the tier one, at the core class, that we're focusing on differentiating and and scaffolding. Uh, we're utilizing uh, universal screeners or benchmarks, so we know where students are, those where those I A Bs fall into it. Um, and we also wanna make sure that we can intervene um, beyond that. So that's where that tier two um, intervention has happened, which is more targeted. Um, looking at the data um, more in terms of where are we? Where are our gaps in our instruction? How do we make sure that now we're making sure that in the classroom instruction, we're addressing those gaps? Um, and so in that target instruction, if we gotta pull small groups out, we're talking about about eight to ten students. Now we're gonna drill with them, you know, what skills are they missing? What knowledge, what, what understanding is critical and making sure that they, they get that? So it's kind of reteaching maybe what they're missing that core, and that core um, uh, tier one. And making sure that they, they have it in that tier, tier two. And then tier three, recognizing that some students need that true individualized instruction. So we created a schedule in which we have that. So, you know, we have that core, which is eighty-four uh, minutes. Then for those students who need additional support, uh, they have time with their uh, language art teacher if they need support in. In literacy, or they're with their math teachers if they need uh, support um, with their math teacher for thirty, thirty-eight minutes, okay, every other day. For those who require more, we have specialists in place, we have math specialists, we have two math specialists. Um, and we have two language arts specialists that provide that tier three um, support. And now they're, they're working on those, you know, if it's language arts more, no foundational skills, responding, um, community awareness. Word study, they're really working on that to really make sure that those students can access the curriculum. Because what is key here is not remediation, it's acceleration. So we really wanna make sure that these students have the, the, the skills to be able to access the grade level uh, curriculum. So by, by looking at, you know, um, you know, shared vision of rigorous, uh, rigorous instruction. This collaborative effort amongst teachers, administrators, and specialists. We're creating this, which is critical, and it research shows that collective teacher efficacy is the number one. Effect size in terms of student success. So in other words, we've gotta really feel that we're capable of meeting the needs of our population. And and that's gonna be, and then by aligning our curriculum, which I had to mention, with state standard. Uh, forcing professional development and implementing a MTSS for the. More commonly known as FPI, the state process, you know, we aim to ensure that, you know, every student receives the support, instruction they need to succeed. In these critical areas. With that, I think it's important to recognize that we can't just solely focus on the academics. We have to also focus on um, the social emotion piece, so that whole student approach. So as uh, Mr. Danlich was saying with regards to attendance, we wanna create an environment. In which our, our students feel supported, um, socially, emotionally, and academically. And so this is where I'm going to pass it over to you, because we get an opportunity to talk about how we're going with our climate.
Um, so our uh, lab area, uh, is what we've explored in climate and culture. Um, so the big piece is this, obviously, create a positive learning environment for our students to do that as well. Um, so we've already started um, a lot of the work that just been listed, starting with Chris Wright, uh, leading the Florida practices. So the uh, faculty and admin staff would live in training in August. And we actually got to do a lot of the practices that Chris Wright talks about in her training. So um, having those sort of conversations in classrooms, tying it in with discipline, right? So that healing process after an incident happens, whether it's a conversation between the teacher and student, whether it's a conversation within the classroom, it's all for that. Um, so that was a really great opportunity for our staff to also connect with each other. We got a lot of positive feedback from the staff about that and how it was nice to get into college, like they don't normally get to. So implementing those practices. In the day-to-day, um, so quality behavior intervention or QBI is what we are doing with um, Dr. Marty Breidington. And so that training was done with our, all of our support staff and our admin team as well. Um, and basically what QBI is, is looking at the function of the behavior and of a behavior relating to the student. And discussing the data and the science behind that behavior. And then trying to implement strategies to uh, address the behavior and also change it. So we are starting those meetings this month, um, with our CST process. So we'll have more about that, so. Um, and then really, one of the big things that we've worked on over the summer with our state school climate is addressing areas for improvement. So as an admin team, we took a really hard look at the climate data from last year. And also we brought it forward to the um, state school climate, and then we actually presented it to our staff, so everyone can do it. And at state school climate, we decided that our areas of important communication, faculty mental health and moral being, and students will be here any minute. So what we did at one of our first faculty meetings is we um, asked the staff to give input on what the actions that should be timed for extreme vocal scenarios. So different things that we are doing, for example, for faculty mental health and moral being, at the start of our faculty meeting, from the team. Activities, so it's another opportunity for the faculty to unify, um, different events for them, celebrating their stuff as well. More communication from us, because I'm the team, we're the weekly basis, we're really basic toward team members. Um, you know, making sure we're attending the team meetings as well. Um, and communicating with the essential teachers, who don't necessarily attend the team meetings. And um, then like Mr. Danlott says, Falcon Five, about every Friday, black and red. Um, and then of course, getting better together, so these have talked about it a few times with such a large group, so unifying us is really important. Um, so we did do breath cancer awareness, we went this Wednesday, we're wearing orange for Unity Day for Interbuling Month. And we have different activities going on um, around the month. Trying to change some of the clubs of enrichment that we offer this year, so that we can engage all learners in non-traditional activities. So right now, um, we have puzzle club in, as part of enrichment, we have some drums as part of enrichment, and then we have our other clubs. Um, such as newspaper, uh, student council, robotics club, which is a huge, huge one, and that's running all year. And the advisors for that are really hoping to go to competitions this year. So that has been a motivator for students, especially who um, struggle with coming to school. They understand that they have to come to school, they also have to uh, behave right, uh, to continue to be a part of the club. So it's been um, great to offer those opportunities um, along with sports.
This.
I grow a lot, what you're doing for your kids and stuff, and I, I love you, everything I do. And the only place I heard you saying is connecting with parents, those with the cameras. So how will we approach our parents? How will we try and, how will we getting them to buy in to also support their kids as they're going through this very difficult time in their lives?
Yeah, I think we're, we really put a focus on community outreach. Like I said, we were, uh, we were at First Night down at, at PQ, we, we'll be at our second Branford Manor event, um, coming up on the twenty-fifth.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by, I'm, we're there, what do you, what do you mean by that? What's that look like?
Mm-hmm, so, so we've, we've set up a table, we've got all sorts of different resources, our counseling uh, department has put together resources for parents. Uh, whether it be counseling services, whether it be um, our school schedule, our school calendars, our magnets, our things like that. So meeting parents where they're at, we, we find that sometimes up on the hill, it's, it's difficult for some of our parents to get there. So we've decided to try to get to them a little more, um, but we had a very successful open house night, with over five hundred families. Uh, that came in, we had over um, fifteen, uh, they, fourteen or fifteen um, outside agencies from GASP to, uh, GOSA was there. Um, you know, we're, we're really trying to create the, the school as, as this welcoming place. Mr. Davis has organized an ELL dinner this week, uh, where we're gonna have our specific ELL families coming in.
Tonight, tonight's weekend. The one of the, one of the things, as I said, is one for us to know who we are, and as we saw, that our ELL population is growing. We recognize that, and we wanna make sure that we are creating an atmosphere for that particular population to be supported, particularly the families. And so um, we're having two nights, Wednesday and Thursday, uh, well, they do a family day tonight. Uh, for the purpose of uh, one, introducing our new T-Sol uh, teacher, but. Uh for the purpose of uh one, introducing our new T-Sol uh teacher, but also getting them in the school. And encouraging, because typically that population um has not really attended uh parent teacher conferences. So our our hope is to get them in there a week before, show them around, and invite them to participate in our parent teacher conference.
We're all, again, we're working with uh the PTO. We're looking at doing the Breakfast with Santa this year, getting families back in our building. We've got this spring, looking at some family fun nights, so where it's gonna be open to the community to come. Have our gym open and and a movie in the music room and, again, really focus on getting families in the building, not just.
I I also think that it's something that.
And they're followed all through. So Mr. Danlock has those sixth graders he started with, and their seventh graders, and now their eighth graders. So even with some of the interactions where they've had to come to central office with me and Mr. Danlock, he knows those families. I mean, you know, he and every single one of them, they, you know, I can see that they built those relationships and with the counselors. And so I'm so excited. Pitch is doing something very similar now, back to the house system, where you really build those relationships.
I have different points I'd like to address. And one is, is there still any in-school suspension? And are there a lot of discipline issues? And is that room filled? No.
Not typically filled. But there's a, yeah, I will say that uh another one of our challenges that we work is is we addressing student behaviors and supports, and that will improve as a result in reduction in our our suspension.
And involving the teachers in it. We heard a lot in our culture climate surveys across the board about behavior and the communication. So they knew that discipline was happening because we had twice as much as we had prior to COVID. But they needed to be part of it. So this restorative practice involves them. It gives them more tools in their toolkit to be able to handle instead of sending it just to the principal automatically, that they're able to handle better even in the classroom. And then they build that relationship with the kid.
Also, I know one time I was told at Copper, they did a lot of interdisciplinary teaching with LA Social Studies, where they have linked assignments, and I don't know if that's still going on.
It is. As a matter of fact, uh part of MYP is having a disciplinary unit. And there were several of those that.
Another club I would suggest is video game. Here's this little high school has an amazing program. But it it's really amazing. And they actually, there are teams, the teams, they teams. And I mean, if you want to get a draw, the great pieces too.
I think I think Dr. Kennedy has that program running.
He does.
Dr. Kennedy is, um, yeah, he's got it at Fitch, yeah.
So it'd be it'd be wonderful, you know, bring the kids in. Yeah, and there's um here's a New York Times article. There's a whole section about being a girl, being thirteen. It is absolutely amazing. There's a separate pull-up, like three or four pages, and it's what it's like. That a thirteen-year-old girl experiences now. Yes, it's wonderful. It's amazing. So you might want to hear this.
Any other questions?
Have to go online and see, you know, all this will change, right? I think so. It's hard, you know, become a community. Takes a few years.
Yeah, it does take a few years, and then you then you throw a ten there on top of it. But I wanted to say, Peter, and to you, Zach, I just really, um, thank you for the presentation. I I really appreciate the four slides on what we plan to do. I mean, that's exactly what we we have been asking as a board, is thank you for giving us the data. But like, now what you what are you doing with that? And how are you doing it? Um, and getting the idea that we gotta we gotta bring people back, right? We have to have kids come back and and do immunity and um what have you. Um, but I it just warms my soul um that our our children and our families and our whole school are being so well thought of. Um, and that they're important. So thank you so much. And I think the data team, whether it's district or school-wide, is such a valuable resource. And having a student data manager who's been able to take a heavy lift off your shoulders to really get the data to you and to be part of that data team at the school level and at the district level is essential. It's really very much appreciated that the board had, you know, thought of that. Yeah, so. And Mr. Davis, just to want to let you know that we just found out from one of our state reps that we are no longer considered a distressed community because we have low employment. So our formulation by the state is that because we have low employment, we are no longer. Low, low, excuse me, low unemployment, sorry, low unemployment.
That one factor makes us less distressed.
Well, no, actually, some families have to be overemployed. They might have two or three jobs to make ends meet. Right. But because EB is hiring and we are located in EB, EB is located in EB. So just, it is, it is striking of what what we're having to be thinking about. So just wanted to let you know that that's sort of what has happened in this past three months. It's it's. Yeah, moving right on. All right, you guys, thank you so much. And so you've had a long day. You don't have to, calendar, you already know about it. Come on, head home. We got a long way.
He shows up at like crack of dawn. Matt doesn't want him going anywhere yet.
All right, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, everybody. You did a great job.
Bye. Drive safe.
All right, so we are moving to um the draft school calendar. Um, Susan, do you want to speak to this at all?
So um we really worked together on the Learn Superintendent. It's what a great group they are. Um, the southeastern Connecticut area, and we really looked at the calendar. Um, and I thought we sent you both. Yeah, they're back to back. So we took the Learn Regional Calendar. We discussed the beginning of the year. We talked about how important it was that running buses, the cost and efficiency of running buses to make it more regionalized, um is a factor. Our teachers often have children in other communities, so to try to match up those um those dates better when we start school, when we end school, and even the vacations. The um regional PD days are really essential. So we really tied it in. You might notice that we actually do our three PD days at the start of the year and then start bringing in the kids. Some do two days, some do three. Um, the April break was actually matched up with Good Friday. So that that would be one week off instead of one weekend a day. Um, because of the way the holidays fall in December, so I'm going backwards now. Um, you know, where Christmas falls, um and where New Year's falls, it actually makes for a nice long winter break. So I think even more reason to stick to the two days in February. Because I think eventually, um, in June, we're always looking, you know, this year it was kind of nice to get out on the twelfth, thirteenth. And we look to do that again, but there could be snow days. So really trying to stick to having, um, you know, our graduation. It's been the sixteenth and seventeenth, but now that falls like on a Monday. So you typically have it on a Friday.
The board will set the date in no later than March, I think. But I think.
Why, why, I always wonder, why can't we set that date?
You could, but they have to get a hundred and eighty days in. So if you if we had a whole bunch of storms, Liz.
Oh, I see. I got it.
Yeah. So it's either gonna be Friday.
My my, I I am, you know, always working on the calendar. This year, I'd really love to see it start today. Whether we find, I just think that it's because it's so early this year. That, and I know what Liz says about the AP, but to me, it is so important for to have that time. And I, you know, I don't know, many people know that London is doing year-round classes in elementary school. So it's a pilot option to go year-round with those like two-week breaks. But I mean, you know, you you have a learning loss. You know, yeah, you get out earlier in June, two more of a learning loss. When when we used to go a little later in June, I always thought that was a little bit better than start actually Labor Day. But especially this year, Labor Day is like one of the earliest possible dates. And I think for employment with families, I think it's important this year. I'm gonna vote to not support this calendar unless it's starting after Labor Day. Even though I am all for buses and the learn calendar and so forth and so on every other year, not I I just can't support this issue. So that's my feeling about this calendar. So I thought, and I found that there's, you know, we 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 have a day, we have the twenty-seventh as full day, which was all November, which was always a fact day. We have given full days in this calendar that you could possibly move around a little bit. And also we have, you know, Columbus Day, Indigenous People's Day. November is so broken up, they're hardly. It's it's terrible. Yeah.
Any other comments?
I'm gonna do my stick. Yeah, I know. I honestly believe we should be in line with a lot of the other states in this country, where they start around the fifteenth, obviously. And I know that sounds very girly and stuff, but we don't have the um, we don't have the problems anymore with people coming saying, oh, well, it's too hot. You can't be in a classroom because they're all air-conditioned. So really, I honestly, and I I'm, you know, I understand that London's looking at um going around. I didn't know that. But when we were in California, we had twelve months full years, and we had big breaks. I just think that we need to start looking at not what, okay, what everybody else is doing. And I understand that we have teachers that have, you know, in other districts, and I I appreciate that. Don't get me wrong. I really do. I've worked in districts where I lived in other spaces. But the bottom line is, is that we gotta give our kids the best chance, the most instructional. And I just think, I don't think coming the day after lame, I want to start the middle of August and maybe go to the end of May or whatever. But I just think we're we're missing out on instructional days. I would, I personally would prefer to have a twelve-month calendar and not not every nine weeks. I think we need to start cleaning ourselves off of something that's been archaic. It's been out of necessity since we're not even in the industrial revolution anymore. It's well founded. Yes, I understand. That's what I'm saying.
So I I would love for you to bring that up towards the Department, State of um of Education. I just, um, until, I can't, I understand, and I actually understand the value of like doing trimesters in terms of having kids together and then a a break and then get together. But it it would have to be a concerted, it would have to be a concerted effort. So I hear, and I can appreciate what you're saying specifically, because the two of you are educators. Um, you might be retired, but you're still educators. Um, I I just, um, I I think you have to kind of stick to what what we have until um we can move policy into a different way.
Um, to make a clarification, would it be useful to put this on a cow after the election? We invite the new board, not yet swimming, to be able to participate in the discussion, whether or not this happens this year. I think that the experiential level of data and this and such, that benefit the new board gets a deeper from all around the table.
I I think, when does this calendar have to be voted on? I think the reason why we're bringing it up in today's comm- committee of the whole is because of, I think it has to be voted in on but we do have to, we do have to pay attention to it. I want to orient you, though, in June, if the last day, according to this calendar, is the twelfth. We typically have a few snowstorms, and we'd like to have a Friday graduation. So if graduation can have happen on Friday, the thirteenth, which it probably won't, it'll be happening on the twentieth, which is the latest date that we graduated. Well, I, that hasn't happened since twenty fourteen, since I've been here. They've all been, they've really come out to see, so. So we may have to adjust, I don't know. We have to see, but you have to know that, and I don't know what the rate is to run our buses daily. But every day that we do it differently than the region, we still have to transport the other schools. Um, and, you know, so we just have to keep in mind, that is a pretty costly endeavor if we're off by a lot. Well, if they've got a vacation and we don't, or we have a vacation and they don't, it will cost us something. Talking about the start date.
Reassert that my concern is, yes, for the calendar this coming year, is for mitigating shortening the learning for for streaming. Uh getting sharing as much as you guys. You can be invited to.
They can, they can listen, but they can't participate. And so, so I guess we as a board, Matthew, could say, this becomes the new board's issue and give it to them and have them do it, or at least for the first year, they don't have to necessarily think about um what this school count, what the school calendar wants.
Can the chair legally, this may be turned to you, can the chair legally be approved? Or invite, take your guests to participating discussions?
For for what purpose, Matthew?
For the purpose of engaging the newly elected board, the top of the member's to be able to participate in some of this discussion given to.
This may be just cutting the cord right here. These two ladies, as I recall, to be long, are the ones with the strongest opinion regarding down. I could put in a memo and say to all the prospective board members, save it for me. Uh, your idea is wonderful.
However it's done, it's the important thing.
They can come and they can listen. That would be fun.
I think it is our decision.
For this year, we need to keep this, that one less thing, because when they come in, they're coming in straight into budget. And I remember going, unfortunately, I came in, I was the only new thing, you know? But I remember going, oh, my God, this would have I, you know? So this is one thing. I I think, you know, this is a discussion that will happen again.
Next year for them.
It's always gonna happen. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I will support this. I just want to make sure that you understand, even though I don't agree with this, I know that we can't really be really about it. I do not like starting the after Labor Day. I think we need to get our kids in, we need to settle. So that when they come back to Labor Day, we're hitting.
How would we do for attendance? In your opinion, Susan, six schools started the week between six.
Yeah, I mean, it's the twenty ninth and thirty of September.
Would we have kids massive, you know, student attendance?
It always, it seems like those first couple of weeks, we're losing a few and gaining a few until it kind of settles in. Um.
I'm so common. In the middle school and the high school, it's an A B schedule. So on one day, they get their A classes, the next day they get their B classes, and then they have a nice. And then they come back knowing what they're, okay, here's, here we go. Half your student population is dealing with A B schedule. So on Monday, on this, like this year, it was a little wonky. But this schedule actually says, okay, on the twenty ninth, we're doing.
A and a B day, you get both.
Twenty ninth is the A, then the B day, and then we're right into it. And so I just think, I mean, if we can't start on the fourteenth of August, well, you know, fifteenth of August, as my grandson, I was, you know. But I do think I'd love to hear somebody about father elementary school.
There might be something for the next board to to hear.
Yeah, to bring somebody in.
I communicate with Cynthia with Rich quite a bit.
Right, right. And just to, it really brings somebody in to talk about that, why it's just elementary, middle school and high school. But I.
It's just a cohort. I don't think it's not the entire.
It is a small pilot.
You get, it's a pilot, you get to choose.
Right.
But it's active for even doing it. And I know some parents or students.
And that they provide the daycare on the off season. So it's basically year-round schooling and it must cost the district quite a bit of money. It's like adding three months to what we already have per pupil so that it comes with the cost.
Well, I'm sure it does.
Yeah.
But it would just be interesting to see how, why they're doing.
Right.
So has to be any of your plans somewhere about?
Well, I'm just working on universal free K and those T Ks right now. I gotta take care of those babies first before I started.
Any other conversation?
Just we vote on, not now, but we'll, we'll vote on this in.
I think next week.
Yeah, we could, we could just, we could discuss it next week.
Does this require a first reading?
No, it's a policy. This calendar. All right, and so our next thing is, um, the referral list. I had sent a message off to the chairperson that would be Andrea, who is not feeling well. She left. I don't know what happened to to Jay. Yeah. Um. Yeah, okay. Um. Is to, just to make sure that your referral list is up to date and makes sense so that the new board can kind of like begin to kind of take a look at what that is.
We updated ours just a couple of hours ago. And that's going to be, Phil's gonna be sending it to you or it's gonna send it to us to make sure we've got it right. And then we will send our update.
Okay.
So it will be.
Okay. Once again, Jay's not here. And in in.
I spoke to.
Awesome, awesome.
I'm raising and P T Os.
Yep.
And that, I think, goes on the policy.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense. So under policy, which will be.
Anything, whatever we have.
I don't know on this discussion of mentor program, what your communication needs to do on that. Hopefully it will be, but it seems to me that Susan's running a.
Well, I think one of the things that we took a lot of time on was to take this document and add it to our yearly, monthly, Cal one, Cal two and regular meeting. A couple of staff members have said they just like the fact they've noticed that we've had more time to concentrate, like we really took time with Groton Middle School. We took time with Fitch High School. And by spreading it out over the year like that, instead of having it like we have to remember, we've got to go back to this. It's already in place in an annual form and a couple of times. Sometimes we're looking at, you know, different topics a couple of times a year. Um, so I think getting some of these things that were reoccurring, items that we wanted to talk about onto our paced out year has been, it's been helpful for me. It, I think it's been helpful for Kim and I to say, because we can just refer back to that and say, oh, yeah, it's time to do October one numbers. They're coming up, these enrollment numbers, you know.
So you're saying discussion of mentor program, you're saying you think that 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 is done.
Listen, Susan.
Yeah.
Now, I agree. I agree. We will update it along the annual, so it does come back for you.
The last one here, track families, there was a census, it's the last one, modify that to track families slash businesses slash volunteers. Absolutely, because economic development has not, virtually nothing. It will be absolutely nothing I could find about rotten public stores by the way that I'm just reaching a link to a website. And we, part of the document that we hope to do for families, yes, will be able to be useful for economic development. So we need to authorize us to, two of us with that in mind, to meet with economic development to see if they will be buying with this collaboration.
If they could help induce some more affordable housing for our families so they're not moving from here to North, to London and Norwich, yeah.
That's.
Well, I know.
But I mean, this document highlights some of the wonderful things we're doing.
Yeah, you're right. Rita?
I just like some of the things about the.
Yeah. Great, if there's no further conversation about the referral tracking, uh, take motion for adjournments.
Don't move.
Have a second. Matthew, all those who have a discussion.
I.
All those who have a.
I.
I oppose abstain, motion is carried.